Regular meeting of November the first, this is our first meeting for November. We will stand for the pledge of allegiance. We will follow that with an invocation by Alderman Siskel and a moment of silence. Who would join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Siskel, if you would please.
Loving God, we lift our hearts to you in prayer as we begin this meeting. May we have the wisdom to know what's ours to do and what action to take. May we remain open to your guidance and may we draw upon your wisdom. Amen.
All right. Thank you again, everyone. We appreciate everyone being here this evening. First thing for us to do would be approval of the official agenda with consented items. I have one item that I emailed the board about adding at the table, and Ms. Harden has taken the opportunity to put it on the agenda that is in front of you. It is under Fire Department Number Two, which is Permission to Apply for a Grant. I would suggest if there is no objection, that we might put that on a consent agenda, but I will wait till we go through. And as far as I know, there is nothing else for us to do other than to go with the consented items in the official agenda. Alderman Carver, do you have any changes?
When I was gonna ask a question, we can pull it from the consent agenda is on the garbage services with the county. And just reading headlines, making sure that we was not the Friday. Or do they have the capacity, everything, they have any issues with the trucks to handle this agreement?
Well, it's us handling the agreement and
This is for, okay.
Yes, this is for us being good neighbors to try to help the county in their time of distress, shall we say, for not picking up the garbage. We're not going to put ourselves in jeopardy. We've put this down as a two-month agreement that we then revisit. I'm not sure if the county's interested, but I know they've contacted the vice mayor, and I've talked to them briefly about it, but I thought it would be an opportunity for us to show some goodwill and help them if they indeed wanted to. So, we put together some numbers where we could charge them, and it was us and the county. It has nothing to do with their service provider, who is Golden Triangle. So, this is just our opportunity to see if we can help.
We'll still be able to provide all the service to our
Oh, yes. We're not going, we're not about to cut City of Starkville short.
No additions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Rupp?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Brooks?
No, ma'am. Please.
Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Siskel?
Ma'am.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Ma'am, ma'am. Thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am. Ma'am, thank you.
So, I couldn't entice anybody to put that on the consent
Oh, allow me, please.
Move approved.
Okay.
Move approved, ma'am.
All right. So, I have an idea that someone wanting to put that item on the agenda, and seeing no objections, then we will place the Fire Department Item Number Two on the consent agenda. So, thank you very much. All right. Having said that, if I could get a motion to approve the official agenda with the consented items as amended.
No move.
On the motion from Alderman Rupp, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Brooks. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And I will now read the consented items. First is consideration of the minutes of the October 4th, 2022, regular meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen of the City of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the October 14th, 2022, work session of the mayor and board of aldermen of the City of Starkville. Under Mayor's Business, we have consideration of the first amended agreement between the City of Starkville and the Octibah County Humane Society, Inc., for the management and operation of the City of Starkville Animal Shelter. Two is consideration of the long-term lease of two plus or minus acres for the expansion of the humane shelter facilities and operations. Three is consideration of the interlocal agreement with Octibah County to provide residential trash, garbage services on an as-needed and mutually agree-upon basis with a reevaluation of the city costs at the end of a two-month period. Under Board Business, Item Two is consideration of a resolution of the mayor and board of aldermen of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, authorizing the issuance of general obligation public improvement bonds of the municipality, or a general obligation public improvement bond of the municipality for sale to the Mississippi Development Bank, or authorizing entering into a loan agreement with and obtaining a loan from the Mississippi Development Bank, all in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $15 million in one or more federally taxable or tax-exempt series, and for a term of any individual series not to exceed 30 years to provide funds for the authorized purposes and for related purposes. Under Department Business, Airport, we have request approval of change order number one from Tabor Construction and Development of Mississippi for grading excess dirt in the amount of $4,838.40 from the 2022 DMOT MM-0068-1022 grant at George M. Bryan Field. Two is request approval of awarding a contract A to the low bidder, Erecta Tube, in the amount of $228,712 to manufacture and deliver a corporation hanger, including the door at George M. Bryan Field, funded from the 2022 M.D. multimodal grant MM-000068-1022, the FAA AIG grant, and up to 2.5% match from the airport. Under Engineering, Item One, consideration of an engineering services contract with Neil Schaefer for the Build Grant Project, Construction Engineering and Inspection, C E and I, and authorize the mayor to execute any necessary M.D. paperwork for this project in accordance with the M.D. Local Public Agency's LPA manual pending M.D. approval. Two is consideration of approving summary change order number one for the 2022 street improvement project in the amount of $352,128.33 to include necessary asphalt and striping improvements for roads, including West Garrett University and South Montgomery. Three is request authorization to advertise for bids for the Cornerstone Boulevard entrance landscaping project. Four is request authorization to advertise for bids for the Cornerstone Boulevard pavement overlay project from Highway 25 to New Cornerstone Park entrance. Five is request, I'm sorry, consideration of approval of change order number three in the amount of $65,439.92 for the Sportsplex drainage for adjustments to final quantities, electrical repairs, and drainage box adjustment. Under Fire Department, we have request permission to allow Preston Newman and Ryan Plassen to travel to Savannah, Tennessee, for the 14th Annual Tennessee River Training Weekend, November 4th through 6th, 2022, at an approximate cost of $1,100, travel meals, registration, and hotel. And then on consent, number two is request permission to apply for a grant recently offered by the Mississippi Bureau of Emergency Management Services for the purchase of AEDS medical supplies or other allowable medical equipment in the amount of $14,855 with a city match of $3,698.55. Under H.R., we have number one, request authorization to hire Nicholas Evans, Hayden Pierce, Shane Russell, and Kamal Williams as entry-level firefighters, and Colton Birmingham as a certified firefighter in the Starkville Fire Department. Under Parks, we have request authorization to reject the bids received October 13th, 2022, and re-advertise for three concession stand trailers for Cornerstone Park. Under the Police Department, we have request approval to apply and accept if awarded a Walmart community grant in the amount of $2,000 to be used in the area of public safety technology advancement. B is request permission to purchase one stationary automated license plate reader through the 100% reimbursable Homeland Security subgrant, with preferred of the two quotes being Vigilant Motorola Solutions L6Q, the cost of the system being $9,615. C is request permission to accept the Enterprise Service Agreement for Vigilant Solutions Automated License Plate Reader for the Hot Spot Grant Purchase of a Vehicle Automated License Plate Reader, previously approved by the board. Under Code Enforcement, we have consideration of calling for a public hearing under Mississippi Code Annotated 211911 to determine whether the structure located at 514 West Main Street with parcel number 1180, I'm sorry, 8O-00-233.00 is administered to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. B is consideration of calling for the public hearing under Mississippi Code Annotated 211911 to determine whether the structure located at 104 Windsor Road with parcel number 118H-00-113.00 is administered to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. And C is consideration of calling for a public hearing under Mississippi Code Annotated 211911 to determine whether the structure located at 107 East Gillespie Street with parcel number 102A-00-087.00 is administered to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. Under Utilities, we have request authorization to advertise for bids for the downtown water and sewer replacement project. Two is accept emergency authorization consistent with presidential determination number 2022-19 from Trans Armor to rebuild 20 transformers at a cost of $26,557. Three is request authorization to accept the lowest quote from Ren Body Works LLC for a utility bed for a Ford F-250 in the amount of $10,547. Number four is request authorization to accept the lowest and best quote from Ren Body Works LLC for a utility bed for a Ford F-350 in the amount of $10,547. Number five is request authorization to advertise for source of supply bids for the electric and water divisions of Starkville Utilities with the intent of awarding the source of supply contracts for January 1, 2023, through June 30, 2022, as well as July 1, 2023, through December 31, 2023. Number six is request authorization to declare excess culverts, bridge components, and other materials not on inventory as surplus and to auction on gov deals. Number seven is request authorization to renew asset essentials software license agreement from Brightly Solutions. Number eight is request authorization to purchase F-350 chassis 60-inch cab to axle for replacement of vehicle 128 in the amount of $40,401, and request authorization to accept the lowest and best quote from Ren Body Works LLC for the bed assembly and installation for the service truck for wastewater in the amount of $29,782.11. And last but not least, number nine, request authorization to accept the best quote from Michael Box for College View pump station removal in the amount of $39,647.68. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. It is my pleasure. All right. With that said, the next item we have is Mayor's Comments, and I get the pleasure of introducing new employees, which is always fun and always pleasant for all of us up here to put faces to names. So, we will start with the Starkville Fire Department. We have Mr. Zalen Brown. And there's the chief and Mr. Brown, okay? Zalen was born in Jackson, Mississippi, but grew up in Clinton. Zalen was raised by two great parents, Dr. Kristen Brown and Renardo Bradford. He attended Clinton and Macomb High Schools, graduating in 2020. Zalen was an active member of the Clinton Band from middle school through high school. Some of Zalen's hobbies include exercising, cooking, and being outdoors. Welcome, Zalen. Happy to have you. Next, we have David Devon Dosher. David was born in Ackerman, Mississippi. He is the oldest child of David and Dolores Dosher, and has a younger sister, Kelly Dosher. I am pronouncing that correctly, right, Dosher? Good. Thank you. David graduated from East Mississippi Community College after receiving his degree. He later enrolled in Mississippi State University. Prior to joining the Fire Department, David worked multiple jobs, including car salesman, maintenance, janitorial service, and installing security and fire alarm systems. His hobbies are reading, fishing, and exercising. Welcome. And next, we have Will Fenimore. Oh, coming up from the back. We didn't do you in the order. Mr. Fenimore was born and raised in Aurora, Colorado. He has a kind of knack for tinkering and working with his hands, which is why he chose mechanical engineering for a major and enrolling at Mississippi State University, as his grandfather was a professor there, and his mother and uncle also attended. At age eight, he was involved in a dirt bike accident and received a third-degree burn. He attended the Children's Hospital Burn Camps program after being burned. He was given the position of burn ambassador, which allowed him to travel around the state and even to Manchester, U.K., to raise money. Will credits his experience with the camp as the reason he wanted to join the fire service. He loves being outside with his family, riding dirt bikes, hunting, and fishing. So, welcome, Will. And next, we have, excuse me, let me turn a page here. Gene King, firefighter. All right. Again, from the back we're pulling. All right. Actually, everybody's a firefighter tonight. We don't have anybody else. This is awesome. All right. Gene was born and raised in West Point, Mississippi. He graduated high school in 2011 and later joined the U.S. Army, thank you for your service, where he served three and a half years as an infantryman and later becoming a tank mechanic. He attended Northeast Mississippi Community College and received his associate's degree in criminal justice. Gene also attended the University of Southern Mississippi, where he studied forensic science and studied criminology at Mississippi State. He has three children, two girls and one son. In his spare time, Gene enjoys riding dirt bikes, four-wheelers, horses, and playing basketball. Welcome. And then we have Jackson County. Is that right? Jackson, did I pronounce that correctly? All right. Jackson attended Starkville Public Schools and after moving to Starkville in the second grade from Houston, Texas. Jackson enjoys training his dog and enjoys playing soccer with friends, as well as listening to audiobooks almost every day. Welcome, Jackson. Tyian Robinson, did I get that one right? A long I. Okay, great. Thank you. Tyian was born in West Point, Mississippi, and is a graduate of West Point High School. He attended EMCC and worked as a welder at Plum Creek before joining the Starkville Fire Department. He's the son of Felicia Henley and Fred Robinson, and he has two siblings, Trey Robinson and Tamara Robinson. Tyian is the proud father to a baby girl named Terri Robinson. In his free time, Tyian enjoys taking care of his baby girl and spending time with his family. He's a member of the Northside Christian Church in West Point, Mississippi. Welcome. And last but certainly not least, we have Jacob Vargo. Jacob was born in Memphis, Tennessee, and attended Evangelical Christian School. He is the son of Jake and Christie Vargo, and he has three siblings, John, Gracie, and Kate. Jacob is currently a sophomore at Mississippi State studying criminology. He grew up hunting, fishing, and working on his grandfather's property. He attends church at Grace Presbyterian in Starkville. While at Mississippi State, he joined the East Octibah Fire Department and developed a strong appreciation for the fire service. When the opportunity to work for the Starkville Fire Department presented itself, along with continuing his education at Mississippi State, he knew it was something he wanted to pursue. Jacob spends a lot of his free time training his new pup, a black lab named Daisy. Welcome, Jacob. Thank you all. We appreciate you joining our service. And this, the last young man is the member of that new group that you were
Yes, ma'am.
From the university, the program?
We have two actions.
Two, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Great. Wonderful. That's wonderful. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Glad to have all of you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. So, hopefully everyone had a great Halloween and enjoyed all the candy that went with that. We've got a weekend coming up for football, so we're back at being busy this weekend and looking forward to perhaps some good weather for all of us and a successful, successful game. So, that's all I have. Alderman comments? Alderman Carver, anything from you, sir?
No, ma'am. I may have deferred back to you, but just to comment on the mural that was just finished up, I just happened to come by and pass it today and look at it.
Beautiful, isn't it?
It is. It's a great mural. Good addition to the city.
Good. Alderman Rupp?
Ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
Ma'am.
Alderman Beatty?
Ma'am.
I want to remind everybody that Tuesday, we have general elections here in the City of Starkville and in Octibah County, and so please get a sample ballot, because you'll be surprised when you get there and go, I didn't know we were voting on that. So, get your sample ballot, get educated, and go vote Tuesday. If you are not going to be in town, if you are 65 or older, if your work prohibits you from being able to vote next Tuesday, you have until Saturday at noon to vote with an absentee ballot. And thank you for voting.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
No, thank you, ma'am.
All right. Alderman Vaughn?
Sorry, high game will be played Thursday night due to the shortage of referees, so we'll be playing Thursday night, and Thursday night is senior night.
Okay, wonderful. And that's the second time they've done that with shortage of referees. We might need to take up a second role. Go be a ref role. All right. Thank you, everyone. And just to tag back to the mural, Alderman Carver, that was done, Attorney Julie Brown commissioned that, and that was Deborah Mansfield, who is a West Point artist who is doing that. She's done several around town. So, she really has done an incredible job on that. All right. Next, we have citizens' comments. Anyone who wishes to comment and make some, bring something to the attention of the board, you have three minutes. All of this is timed by Ms. Harden, who is our city clerk sitting over here. We do not normally answer in return, but we listen intently. So, Mr. Turner?
Good evening to the mayor and the board. My name is Avon Tonawatt Seven. To the mayor, to the police chief, to the fire chief. Citizens have a few things that is getting to be eerie all around, and that is people taking the Second Amendment to do as they please, and when they do this stuff, then they come up with a mental problem. But to everyone, we seen what happened to the Speaker of the House husband. So, we have to be careful, because as long as people can do whatever they want to and blame it on a mental illness and get away with it, they will. But now, the people that is in the military, they are trained to protect themselves. But to the citizens, let's be careful. Time will change. This weekend, it will be dark early, so we're just going to have to be careful and be wary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else wishing to speak under citizens' comments? Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, I'll close it for citizens' comments. We next have public appearances. We have two public appearances. One is Students for a Sustainable Campus. Ms. Emma Van Epps, are you here? Yes, ma'am. If you would come up, please. You have 10 minutes, again timed by Ms. Harden, and I think you have a presentation, if I understand it?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Emma Van Epps. I'm the current president of Mississippi State's Club Students for Sustainable Campus, and so I wanted to inform the board of aldermen about our 2022 climate march. So, is there a clicker? There we go. Beautiful. So, a quick overview of the event. This is our fourth annual climate march, and it was held on October 22nd. It was organized by our club, Students for Sustainable Campus, where we marched from the drill fields to City Hall, as well as hearing educational speeches along the way to march for more sustainable Starkville and MSU community. And so, the purpose of this event is to increase community awareness about the climate crisis and to also submit demands for more sustainable changes to the university and the city. So, I'd like to go through our specifically City of Starkville demands, because we also have some to the university, but the first of which being to reinstate curbside recycling, because we were that we used to be, the City of Starkville used to offer these services, and after COVID-19, that was not, no longer continued. And we are aware that the Think Green Center is a resource and is a great resource that we're very grateful for. But one obstacle for people recycling is that it's primarily open during the workday, except for the 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on the first Saturday of each month. And that can be a big obstacle for people that are either in their jobs during those hours, or are maybe disabled and have a hard time hauling their recyclables to the Think Green Center. And so, we think that reinstating curbside recycling would be a great way to overcome this obstacle. We are also the only SEC town without curbside recycling, according to all of their municipal websites, and so I think to keep ourselves competitive also with the other SEC communities, especially as we are becoming so much more of a sports tourism city, I think that would be very good in terms of advertising our city to potential tourists. We also propose, so our proposal is that Starkville introduce an opt-in curbside recycling program using the 100-plus recycling bins that it already has. And so, we chose an opt-in program for two reasons. One, because we already, we only have so many recycling bins that I've been informed about, and also to reduce the rates of contamination and also to kind of conserve costs if this program were to start and then continue to be developed, because there is always the question of contamination rates. That's always a big obstacle for recycling programs. And so, we think that partnering with Keeps Starkville Beautiful with their educational media campaigns about what cannot be recycled in Starkville, like, for example, plastics, and also having this program be an opt-in program would decrease starting costs and also kind of naturally select for people that are already not going to be contaminating the recycling. If you did all of the steps to opt into this program, those, that population would, in theory, be a lot less likely to recycle poorly. And so, I'm also aware that this is an agenda item later in the meeting, and so I do want to acknowledge that and I'm very excited to hear about that. And definitely make sure to open, I'd like to open it up to questions as soon as I finish the presentation. And so, our next demand of the city is to create a sustainable business awards program. And so, this is an idea that we had, because we really wanted to prioritize working with the City of Starkville in ways that like help everybody. And so, one idea that we had is for the City of Starkville and the partnership to together offer an award, or an awards program for businesses based on their sustainable business practices. And so, some example categories could be most sustainable restaurant, retailer, a lot, we'd have a bunch of different categories that businesses could submit their nominations for, and so they would be judged based off of the uniqueness of the achievement, the level of effort that was required, commitment to sustaining the achievement, because that's huge, and also just the significance and the impact that it would have on the community. And this set of parameters is also modeled after similar awards and other SEC locations, like mainly Gainesville, Florida has a similar program. And we think that this would be very helpful to, A, promote local businesses, but also promote sustainable business practices that could help them in the future continue to be just as successful and keep up with the changing states of the economy and how that relates to environmentalism. And so, our organization, Students for a Sustainable Campus, is very willing to create all the parameters, the nomination form. We'll be really to read all the nominations and choose it if that is what's easiest for the committee. But the reason that we don't create this ourselves and have it be the Students for a Sustainable Campus Sustainable Business Awards is because that comes with a credibility issue. We think that businesses and leaders would be much less likely to take a team of students seriously compared to the City of Starkville and the partnership. And so, I'll be honest, we're willing to do all of the work, but we need a City of Starkville email address, or at least sponsorship, from the City of Starkville to say that this is something that we're putting on and that we endorse. We're willing to make all of the forms and sort through all of the nominations, if that's what is most convenient for this being able to be put into effect. And some incentives we thought of would be, of course, advertising the program, but we would like to explore if potential tax rebates would be an option for type of program like this, or at least be incorporated after so many years if that is, if the program is successful enough. So, I'd love to explore that opportunity if that's possible. And then finally, our third demand is about addressing the issue of building code enforcement, because I know that this is something that is not new and that the city has been experiencing for a long time, because that's not a problem that really arises overnight. And so, we worked very closely with the organization Starkville Strong about their reports and their experiences with this issue, especially with their work with people experiencing homelessness. And so, one of the big issues that we've been informed about is that tenants who submit reports of code enforcement issues are having to repeatedly get in contact with code enforcement officers or fill out forms and have to follow up on a really, really, like, regular basis in order to have any of these changes be enacted. And so, we see that as a communication barrier happening between the tenants, the landlords, and the office. And so, we don't believe that that burden should be on the tenants. And so, some ideas we have on how to kind of alleviate this issue is to propose that the City of Starkville prioritize hiring a new community development director, as well as based off reports and conversations with Starkville Strong and various members of the community, that about four knowledgeable code enforcement officers would be appropriate to address this ongoing issue, because we don't believe that is an issue of code enforcement officers doing a bad job, but with the magnitude of the problem, the magnitude of the problem we're facing requires more action, because this is something that we actually spoke about at our last climate march event and still have not seen a lot of meaningful, significant changes being made. And we have been, we are aware that the list of, like, code violations has been updated, and a new officer, I think there's a total of three, if I'm correct, are currently employed now, which is great progress. But we want to prioritize transparency in the process of code enforcement and making reports, and also, like, taking accountability for some ongoing cases of neglect. And so, a lot of complaints are ending up including black mold, major water leaks, gaps in windows and doors, floors and ceilings that are, like, sinking in, among others. And so, that's something we'd really like to work together. Thank you very much, with the board about solving, because we want to be a resource for you. And so, I'd like to go ahead and sum up our presentation with the sport for our demands. So, I have a picture of some of the people that marched. So I have a picture of some of the people that marched at our march this year. We had about 50 people marching with us, as well as an online petition with over 200 signatures from members of the community. I believe the number right now is about 214. And so I'd like to definitely invite you to ask me any questions and kind of have a discourse about how some of these changes could be enacted.
Normally, we don't do that, but we'll poll the board and see if anyone wishes to have Paul and Rupp.
Thank you.
Action item number two?
Sure.
I think would be a great fit for the Main Street Association, and I'm on that board. And I'm also at Mississippi State. So any of you have classes in the cool?
Yes, sir.
I'm in the East Center. You know where the East Center is?
Yes, sir.
I would love to get you connected with Main Street, because I think they have the resources and the credibility to implement that program. So could you stop by and let's talk about?
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Ms.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Any questions?
Yes, I want to make a statement, Ms.
Oliver Bailey?
Thank you. Ms. Van Epps, thank you. And thank you for bringing in all of you. Thank you for coming tonight and making us aware of very important things that we need to do and be looking at City of Starkville. You did say all the other SEC school, college towns, post cities, Association of Conference schools have curbside recycling, except for Starkville.
According to the current municipal websites, yes.
I do know that, I'll correct something you said that, just because I'm on the board, that we didn't discontinue curbside recycling during the pandemic. We had already, when I came on board, and all of it, three years ago, we had discontinued all recycling in City of Starkville. We brought recycling back and have our collection site at the sanitation department. But there was, not on the curbside, but all recycling had been curtailed in City of Starkville three years ago. In regards to Oxford, our neighbor, Oxford had curbside recycling, discontinued it during the pandemic, went to a collection-only, two collection sites. Thought that they would, their tonnage would drop off. It dropped off very little. And the mayor in Oxford, in a statement, I found an article in the Oxford paper, they reinstated their curbside recycling last October, because the demand was there and went back to it. And so they charge a mandatory fee. I guess the second thing I want to say, and it's going to segue into the part I'm not going, I had re-curbside recycling put on the agenda. And I'm getting some figures together so I can address the board about the cost and the potential program for that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I mean, I've got a five-year-old grandson, you probably met Walter. And we, City of Starkville is Mississippi's college town. That's what our slogan is. We spent millions of dollars on recreation, on street projects. We just had Bulldog Bash that wasn't paid for, our MSU student association paid for. But that was a $200,000 bin. I'm just putting in context what we put, what we prioritized and put money on. And we do not have a curbside recycling program. I think that's something that's missing and deficit in City of Starkville. I'm glad that all of you came tonight. Thank you for coming and, I guess, increasing awareness of something, of this and those other, and your other issues that we need to be about, making changes on. And we appreciate you coming tonight. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And all of you here, and they showed up, let's introduce your fellow committee members or association members?
Some members of our exec committee, the officer head. So I'd like to go ahead and introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Courtney Cochran, and I'm vice president.
I am Grant Peterson. I'm the, excuse me, campaign director. So I like organize the Climate March and I'll organize the Earth Day Fair in the spring.
Okay, thank you.
I am Rebecca Carruth, and I am our service coordinator. So any service projects that we do throughout the year, I'm in charge of.
Okay, thank you very much. It would be a shame for you to be here and then not be recognized. Anyone else have any questions? All right. If not, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right, our next item is the South Montgomery traffic study. Pastor Dennis Lawfman, I believe you.
You must have really had trouble with preachers before. Everybody I've talked to was nervous that I was coming to raise Cain or something. So definitely not doing that. I do want to give honor to our leadership. Thank you for this opportunity. To our mayor, Board of Aldermen, thank you for being here. I do want to say thank you to the mayor. She called me last week as talking about this. And of course, Alderman Vaughn, we pray together at our schools every Wednesday morning and got to talk to him, got his advice. Alderman Carver took my phone call. Also, Alderman Rupp, I thought he was, I looked at an old map, found out that Alderman Brooks is actually my Alderman now. So I do appreciate the response for everyone taking time and very quickly getting back with me and certainly not ignored. And I know being in, I guess, the public service industry, a lot of times you don't get a lot of thank yous for that. Most of the time, it's coming and beating on this podium and, you know, even throwing a chair. As Alderman Rupp said, if you want to throw a chair or something, but, you know, so thank you for getting back with me. I'm here today to express my concerns about the traffic issue on South Montgomery and possible solutions to it that might negatively affect our church. And to give you my future concerns, I just want to give you a little bit of history. If you don't know, our church, the Starkville Church of God, has been in existence for over 100 years. We celebrated in April our 100-year anniversary. The church began in a schoolhouse that was owned by the cotton mill. It then moved a couple of different places, eventually built the blond brick structure that is now an apartment complex on Maxwell Street and was there for several years. And then in 1976, the Lord strategically located us where we are now at Loxley in South Montgomery. Our five acres was purchased for $20,000 before Loxley Way was built or the surrounding neighborhoods were present. The sanctuary that we have was built for $73,000 and a lot of volunteer labor. The parsonage was built for $45,000 and a lot of volunteer labor. So after around a year of completion and spending $138,000, an offer was made for $1 million back in the 70s still. The offer was rejected because the church felt like that we were where we were supposed to be. Over the years, there's been several other offers that have come in, some that were seriously considered, but the church has remained at our current location. And in January of 2003, plans were drawn up for a new sanctuary that I brought with me here that would sit in front of our current sanctuary. And I do believe that we are positioned strategically on that hill in Starkville, Mississippi for a reason. I have a vision, and I know that this is a Board of Aldermen meeting, but I am a pastor and even as Board of Aldermen, I know that your mayor cast vision. And I just want to share with you my vision as a leader in this community. I believe we'll continue to fill our sanctuary. Our church went through a few years of downtime since these 2003 plans were drawn up. However, we're seeing more and more come in, and I believe we'll fill our sanctuary once. And I believe we'll do it twice on a Sunday morning and then move on to these plans. I believe deep spiritual wells have been dug for over 100 years at the congregation and over 45 at our current location to help us reap this last-day harvest in Starkville, like Tibahaw County, Mississippi State University, and the Golden Triangle area. If you're not aware, our Compassion Pantry has been going on since 2000, 2001. And we help feed hundreds every month that come in to our location where we are. Just last night, we hosted a trunk retreat where hundreds of Starkville residents came. They were given a safe, friendly place to enjoy the night with their family. I also want to take the time to say thank you to Starkville PD and the chief for allowing some officers to come over there, and they gave out candy. Great community relations. So thank you so much for that. I say all this to say, we don't want to sell out and move out of town. I believe we've been blessed with a strategic location, and we intend to remain right where we are. Now, I've been pastor there since February of 2021, but I am originally born and raised in Houston, Mississippi, even when they still, I was some of the last, I think, babies born in the Houston hospital. I graduated a Houston Hilltopper in 1998, and so I'm thankful to be home. This is home for me. I tell you all that to say that if the Lord will allow me, I've learned to say never, say never, never say what I'm going to do. If the Lord allow me, I intend to retire right here. So here's my concern, that if the South Montgomery-Loxley intersection were converted to a traffic circle or another lane were to be added, it would most likely take away from us some needed room to expand as we would like to in the near future. Sometime back, before I was here, I was told, again, this is what I've been told, and I know there's power lines, that there are the high-voltage TVA power lines that cut right across our property and that the church had no input in that. And I'm not here to gripe about that. But because of this, it will no doubt be a costly obstacle because of the fact that anything built has to be so many feet away from those lines. And I know that there would have to be a corner pole extended there. So, you know, I might be back one day to ask y'all for a little help with that. You never know. But because of that, I just wanted to be certain, and I've been, as I've talked to, as I said, several Aldermen and the mayor herself also. I did want to bring into record, as the mayor suggested, I don't know who I need to give this to. I brought one official signed copy, and I don't know, serving on different boards like I do, I've got one that can be given to everybody if you like that. Just stating our official request that we would really, really, really like it if, you know, we were able to keep what we have, because we do plan to expand and we want to be a part of the community. We don't want to sell out and go out on 25 or anywhere else or buy a big place. I believe God's got us where we are, in the community, close to campus, close to everything. And that's all I've got to say. This is, this is the plans, just so you can visualize it. This is Loxley, South Montgomery. This is our current sanctuary, current family life center. There's current parsonage sits there. There'll be a building right there, nursery, office space. As you see, you get closer there, and I know parking is also required for a building that size. And I believe that we have space for it now, but if we were to ever lose any of that, it would be. Again, I know that we're talking downstream, South Montgomery, I've been told. But I also just wanted to put that in, let y'all know, let you know I didn't come up here to raise Cain, make any trouble. So I appreciate you.
Thank you, Pastor Lawfman.
I can take any questions or anything that you've got for me.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Not seeing any sound.
How soon would you consider it?
It's, it's, I really don't have a number right now. I mean, we're looking probably five years, you know, off or more. Again, I wanted to get a jump on it, just, just because I know if y'all start heading in a direction and start investing money into a specific direction in this project, I could come and ask, and y'all would have to say you've put too much into it and everything.
I would suggest, if you think it's going to be a five, you know, five-year project, develop some plans to show, I know those, if that's going to be your plan, have something developed for you. We could, our plan for, look at it and see, you know, you have parking spaces inside the building.
Sure. Okay.
Where you get that, you know, get that out of the way.
Sure.
So, I don't know, it might, if we put a traffic circle there, could you still accommodate your parking with a new building? That's, that's, that's your question.
That's, yes, that's.
Six or seven questions.
Yes.
But I'd go ahead and let our plan for start working with you as soon as you think y'all are starting to process the move.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Lawfman. Have a great one. All right. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Mr. Havlon? It's a request for a variance from stormwater requirements. I believe the applicant is in the room.
This is VA 22-13. It is a request by Boardtown Enterprises LLC from a stormwater requirement, a variance from stormwater requirements located at 216 Industrial Park Road. This is located right on the northwest corner of the intersection of Lynn Lane and Industrial Park Road. The applicant is looking to renovate the existing building, which I believe is already underway, to put in Humble Coffee's brewing facility. Now, as a previous request, it'd also have sort of like a cafe open to the public kind of thing. The proposed project does increase the size of the gravel parking, as kind of shown up here. But at this phase, it's not increased the size of the building. The existing lot is heavily wooded. You can see from these views along Lynn Lane and then looking toward the western property line. These trees would have to be removed as part of this. You can see the area in green, that would be the trees that are retained. The area in the pink would be trees that would have to be removed as part of either the parking lot and mainly the detention area on the west side, and then the conveyance over ground along Lynn Lane. So the applicant is requesting relief from the stormwater requirements in section 16.9 of the UDC for this phase of the project. This request, and that, the purpose of that is to preserve those trees for now. The request was notified in accordance with the UDC. Five property owners are notified directly by mail. The legal ad is published on October 6, 2022, and a sign posted on a property in a conspicuous location. And as of this date, we have received no response to the notification. And here is sections 3.71 and 3.76, which are the criteria of variance and the criteria relating to stormwater variance. At the November, or, sorry, October 26th Board of Justice Appeals Meeting, the board unanimously voted to recommend approval of the request with one condition. That condition is shown at the bottom and also in the staff report, is that any future expansion of the parking lot or building will require stormwater mitigation at that time. If there are any questions?
Courtney, any questions to Mr. Havlon before I open it as a public hearing? Alderman Carver?
I'll just, that's what my question can be. You said, basically with emphasis, does this pertain to this project or this portion of the project? Do y'all foresee coming back on stormwater mitigation for a future project?
Yeah, if you expand the buildings at a future date, then that would just trigger the stormwater requirements again, depending on what those requirements were at that time.
Alderman Rupp, did I see your hand?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Brooks? Somebody.
Side pine would be, was triggered, triggered this?
It was just an empty metal building, and so just the amount of renovations going into it were causing the, for the non-people. Correct, correct. It wasn't a square foot, did it?
Alderman Bailey?
They're leaving vegetation, correct?
Correct, and it's rather large trees that are also.
So doesn't that do, in and of itself, do stormwater mitigation?
Yeah, I'm not the expert, but their engineer could speak on what the actual numbers of that are. It's, the way it's flowing off there now, from what I understand, is pretty minimal. So by actually clearing it, we're just creating it to flow faster into a detention area and then release it off the same way.
I figure that's what would happen. So if I was to treasure that, that's actually doing it.
Correct. This is definitely an outlier project.
Now, has this project had any other exceptions or variance has done?
The only other thing it had was a special exception to allow for the restaurant-cafe portion to this, because it is located in industrial.
Just the usage of it.
Yeah, just a special exception for the use, correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else before I, applicant is here. Do you have anything you'd wish to add to any of this? Nope.
I would say, Alderman Bailey's kind of sustainability, so.
Come on up so the microphone can hear you, and identify yourself while you're here.
Kenneth Thomas. I just like trees. So, you know, and like you asked, it does slow down, you know, drainage.
Well, we have all of town now. The project's where they strip the trees off, pave, you know, pave everything, and then the water starts to flow.
Right.
And run into issues that they have already in South Park, Starkville. So I appreciate your keeping this vegetation natural.
All right, thank you. So if there's nothing else, then I will open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak either for or against this project now would be the time for you to do so. Either for or against. Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. And if there are no further questions or comments, then we need a motion.
Move approval.
Well, I have Alderman Carver with a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from all of them is just wrong. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Can I ask him a question on the subject? Is that okay to ask? Maybe we'll become the coffee capital of Mississippi. But did you just go, I think I talked to you, maybe through personal me or something, did you get some certifications in the coffee brewing? What was, what was that about?
No, I just technically got second place in US coffee prelims in roasting. So, so, yeah, we're trying to be a leader in coffee in the middle of nowhere in Mississippi.
So we get to be the coffee capital, too?
I think that's a new thing we're going to push for, so, yeah. Thank you, sir. Looking forward to it.
All right. Thank you so much. Congratulations. We'll look forward to all of that. All right, next item up on the agenda is the public hearing consideration of a variance 22-14. Mr. Havlon?
Yes, this is. Yes, this is, this is the request by Joe Cuvian, on behalf of Tom Bosley, for a variance from, the request to deviate from setback requirements for an accessory structure at 23, or 230 Bancroft Avenue, that is located in the back of the new park, Phase Two of Adelaide subdivision. The applicant has built an outdoor fireplace within the five-foot setback of the property. The fireplace was not noted on the site plan during the permitting process as required. An outdoor fireplace is classified as an accessory structure of Unified Development Code, therefore it is required to be five feet off of the property line. The applicant has requested relief from section 6.34 of the UDC to allow for the fireplace to remain, and so this image is just taken from the road and the alleyway showing the fireplace, the property line is pretty much the backside of the wall, just showing where it sits on the property. And this request was noticed in accordance with UDC, 11 property owners are recorded, notified by mail, ad was published on October 6, 2022, and a sign placed on a property. As of this date, we received two phone calls just requesting information about the request, and one email against the request, and that is shown in the staff report. Here is the criteria for review and approve for this type of variance. At the October 26, 2022 Board of Justice Appeals Meeting, the board voted for to zero, with one extension, to recommend approval of the request with one condition. The outdoor fireplace shall either be converted to gas only, or spark arrestor installed on top of the chimney. And so where that condition, requested condition comes out of, is just due to the location in relation to the two roofs right there, there was some concern, there was wood burning in it, some sparks might fly down, so either part of that condition would solve that. If there are any questions?
Thank you. Any questions of the board this time?
Is the applicant here?
Well, I was gonna ask him after I got questions from you guys.
No, I guess I was just gonna say they're okay with either the gas, the spark arrested.
I believe they've had some discussions with the building official about adding a spark arrestor to it, because I believe the homeowner prefers to keep it wood burning, if possible.
All right, I'll tell you what, if you want, if you'd like to come up, we'll have the applicant come up and, and speak to that.
Does that just mean a flame retardant? What is, what does spark arrested mean?
I believe it's some sort of device on top to catch the sparks.
Joe Cuvian, how are y'all doing? Yeah, it's, uh, it's basically just a chimney cat with a, with kind of a wire cage, and it just kind of just allows anything that does get through to the flue to kind of dissipate. And earlier in the week, or actually it was Monday, I met Steen, the building official on site, we got up on a ladder, and we shot measurements, and according to the, the way it's built currently meets code if it was going through your chimney of your own house. So, um, we, we qualify without the spark arrestor, but we went ahead and got him to approve one on Monday, and just make sure he was okay with it, and he said he was, we bought, we bought it, we purchased it, and we actually put it in place, just, you know, just, just to go ahead and get it done, and we told him we were gonna do it. We told the client not to burn fire in it or anything like that, and, pretty much, pretty much that simple. And originally, the, you know, the, the plan was approved as it was, Adelaide's kind of a close knit neighborhood, which I'm sure you guys know, and it was on the plan, and I think it was just an oversight, I mean, it was drawn on there, so we just built it. We didn't get the permit, originally the owner had hired somebody else, and then we came in after, after the fact and completed. But here we are, just trying to figure out the resolution to it.
Okay, let's see while we can have you both, if there are any other questions. Alderman Carter, did that answer your questions?
I guess I was gonna ask, Steen is very interesting, if you come from a back, a fire background.
Steen, would you come up, please?
I was just gonna ask you, um, what an asset, I guess it is for you to have the fire background at this time, with this interesting case, but I mean, is there's anything you want to add to this, that we need to be taking into our consideration, or?
No, it is the fact that heat and the spark arrestor is gonna prevent the embers landing on the roof, if leaves are built up or anything, it just gives a chance for it to burn out quicker, instead of just flying to there.
And you feel comfortable with everything? Okay.
All right, thank you, anyone else? Anyone else?
Basically, this is asking, this is asking, forgiveness rather than permission.
The side of the issue.
Okay. Glad you came.
All right, thank you, let me open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak either for or against this particular item on the agenda? Either for or against? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, and entertain a motion. And that was Alderman Rupp. Okay, thank you, I have a motion from Alderman Rupp, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Carter. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. All right. Uh, next item on the agenda is the consideration of curbside recycling, Alderman Beatty, this one is yours.
Thank you Mayor, I've just, I don't have any, any information, data, or figures tonight on what could be proposed, how it would be done, and what the cost, I just want to reiterate to the board, you heard Ms. Van Epp, that came up earlier this evening, we're a progressive college town, an SEC college town, and we've got a recycling program, but I think it's time, three years in, for us to look at the possibility of offering at least an opt-in, a buy-in type, voluntary type, curbside program, to see for people who would pay a fee for this service. And so what we're gonna do, and try to maybe come back at the next meeting with, is some information about what the potential of that would, would cause on a per household basis bill to do. We think this is progression, or I think, I think there are, there are also sustainable people and others, that they think this would be as a progression for the city of Starkville, as we, as we continue to improve our recycling efforts, and offer something for residents who are willing to pay that fee for that, for that service. But anyway, Mayor, at the next meeting, I'll have a little more detail about that, and I would ask the, the board to be thinking about, and talking, you know, to other board members, constituents, I mean, I, I can't believe Starkville, Mississippi does not, I don't know, whatever, demand or, or for curbside recycling, if there is an Oxford, Mississippi, or Tuscaloosa, Alabama, or Alvin, Alabama. We have the same kind, you know, it's a university town, same kind of folks, same kind of income, you know, a lot of the same kind of stuff that these other places have, and they have curbside recycling, a lot of them have, most of them have mandatory, they charge the fee, you need to use the, you, you, you know, you use it to lose, you use the curbside recycling availability that the cities provide, and, you know, it's part of the building anyway, so. But I, I would encourage all, all of my fellow board members to talk to people, see what kind of interest is, is out there for it. We had curbside recycling at one time, where people put their recycling single stream in a, in a plastic clear, a green, but you could see through it, see through a bag, this probably would be something different, where we wouldn't, would not use bags to collection people, the waste pros, and waste management, people like that that don't want bags to have to deal with. But something that will give our, even if it's once a month or twice a month, something that gives our citizens, our residents, an opportunity to have, to pay for, and have curbside recycling in the city of Starkville, I think that's just a, a logical, logical progression for a city that's moving and doing a lot of first-class things, and moving forward as one of, you know, Mississippi's top cities, and certainly one of the top cities in the Southeast United States. Are you?
Thank you Alderman Beatty. Alderman Sistrum?
I know you're delighted to have me extend this conversation, and I'd like to say that I am not opposed to the idea of, of curbside recycling. I do think it needs to be done in a financially responsible way. Currently, the sanitation fees that we're paying is subsidizing the free recycling program that we have right now, so one of the things that we would need to look at with this opt-in program is, do we continue that free, free program or not, or do we relieve the sanitation department of that responsibility, and, and managing that under revenue streams that we're not meant to manage that? Another is that there are two models that, that essentially work for this sort of thing. One is to have everybody contribute to it, and, and that keeps your fee down a bit. The other is to have an opt-in program, and your fees are gonna be higher with that opt-in program. I, I think that it, it would be critical, as we're looking at this, to make sure that there is the interest that Alderman Beatty's mentioned, and that there is the density of services in a particular area to, to make, it make sense to do curbside recycling. It doesn't make a lot of sense in my neighborhood, if there are two people participating, it, it's not cost-effective to do curbside pickup in my neighborhood. So, so that's one of the things that needs to be looked at. I would suggest that as we're doing this, unless we're in an enormous hurry to get this done, I would suggest that we do this as part of a larger comprehensive look at our cost for operating the sanitation department, that's something that we've been talking about doing for a while anyway, and it would, it would make sense to do these things together. Another, another opportunity would be to do a request for proposals, this doesn't have to be something that the city itself does, we, we might enter into a contract with somebody else to provide that service. So I, I would encourage Alderman Beatty, as y'all are looking at options, to, to consider that idea of getting requests for proposals, and see if there are commercial entities out there that are interested in partnering with us to, to provide this, they could, that would take the burden of guessing what the cost is gonna be off of our people and your people, to, and, and pushing it to the, to the commercial entity. But again, certainly worth looking at, and, and I do think it would be a great time to take a step back and look at our sanitation services, top to bottom, what it costs us to provide, what our opportunity costs are gonna be if we give up, what we will give up in order to be able to have the time to, to do curbside recycling, so just part of a larger, larger process.
Mayor, may I respond? Oh, I think it's, I know that we subsidize, Sister Strong was talking about us subsidizing recycling, the garbage, everybody's doing it, everybody's, well, I say that, Oxford charged $5 a month, they generate $300,000 in their recycling program annually, because of that $5 fee that customers sell, I mean, but I don't know whether that fly in or not, I just think that we are sharp enough places, that we need to find a way to do this, and not look the way to not do it, and that's what we've been right now, or what we have done in the last, you know, when I came over, we was looking for a way not to do this. I went to, down to Clinton, Mississippi, last weekend, saw Mississippi College, and Dallas State played football, and when I got back, I picked up a copy of Clint Curry newspaper, got back and went on Clint's website, just, I'm just curious to see what, how they do their recycling. Now, they have commercial garbage pickup, waste management picks up Clint's garbage twice a week, like we have, they have two, two times a week garbage, and they pick up recycling one, on Wednesdays, one day a week, every week. I don't know what their fee structure is, but I'll be as comfortable with our fee structure. I am certain that their garbage fee is subsidized and recycling, but it's something, they, they put enough value on it to think it's worthwhile for them to do, first of all, this is the right thing to do, and second of all, because it's, it's, you know, their citizens want it. As a college town, a lot smaller college, but if they, they're doing a good job with them there, they also have, they have curbside recycling, and they have the recycling collection sites, they have two of them, not just one like this, they got two. Oxford has curbside recycling, and they have two collection sites, so you can choose, you can get it, pick it up, have them pick it up curbside on the designated day, in the city of Oxford, or in Clint, Mississippi, or you can, you can care for the collection site, either one, and they have two sites, not one. So those places that are very comfortable in size, and capability to Starkville, Mississippi, are both doing, finding a way to do it, and not necessarily looking for a way not to do it. So that's what I want us to do with the board, and the cities, look for a way to do curbside recycling, and, and, and let's, let's find something that'll work for us, that's financially, financially feasible for us, for us, and let's move forward. Thank you.
All right, and you bringing that back next?
I need some help, I'd like some help with this.
May, may I say one more thing before?
Alderman Sistrum?
Before, I, I would like to say that I, I don't view the idea of looking at this to be sure that it's financially sustainable, as being opposed to doing it, and I, I think that, that sometimes when we bring up the idea of making sure that we're operating in a financially sustainable business, that it's perceived as pushing back and being unwilling to provide a service. The city of Oxford has, has a very robust recycling program, I, I don't know if they charge the fee that you mentioned, Alderman Beatty, I do know that for years, they have subsidized that recycling program through their general fund, and that, that currently they subsidize that to the tune of about half a million to $600,000, so about two meals for, in our world, would, would, would go toward, towards supporting a recycling program. And, and those are the kind of things we need to, to step back and be sure that as we do this, we do this in a way that we can maintain it going forward, and, and that we, we are sure of what our costs and, and all of that are as we get into trying to provide a service, and that there is a demand for the service in the community.
Alderman Beatty?
Thank you. We have an Oxford resident in the building. Council, what, do you know what?
I do, I talked to the mayor today.
The mayor looked up, because I didn't know when she asked me. It's twenty, it's $22, they went up from 21 this year to 22, they do not charge for recycling, they have, the only cost for recycling is to buy the bin, they can have one or two bins, one bin is $10.50, and two bins is $21.
I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm certain they have, they have some of that cost of recycling built into that.
Oh, I'm sure they do, they subsidize it to the tune of $500,000, $600,000.
They also have a recycling facility, Lafayette County, and the city of Oxford have built, that they carry their stuff to, that sorts it, and then they compact it, and they sell it on the, on the market, cans, aluminum cans.
No, they have someone who comes and picks it up.
Well, but they sell it, and they, they derive some income, I guess it runs that facility from there, but I, I guess, let's just find, see if we can find a way to have a curbside recycling program, and, and find a way that's palatable for our citizens through a fee that we charge our citizens. Riddlin', Mississippi, charge, they do charge, it's a $4, $5 a month fee, they issue a bin, they put a barcode on it, it's a use or lose thing, it's not an opt-in, they come by and they pick up your recycling once a week, and they dump it, when they do that, what I, I asked the Pub Works Director two or three years ago down there, when I met with him, how do you get, they said they had 97, 98% participation in their recyc, curbside program, I said, how, and they have collection sites also, he said, how, I said, how do you do that? He said, we charge a mandatory fee, they wanna get their monies worth. The other thing is, when they dump, they dunk, the roll-off can, the, the truck comes by and dumps it once a week, they get, it barcodes, and it tells what household, it's got a code on it, tells what household that came from, and they get, they get Riddlin' bucks, or points, or something like that, that they build up in your account, and they can redeem that against their utility bill, or they can take the money and go down to Pizza Hut and buy a pizza or something with it.
Alderman Carter was, had something he wanted to add, too, if that's all right with you?
No, no, I mean, I just think. I think, I mean, that's a valid thing, but it, it works well for, for Riddlin'. Yeah, I just think, I think from a sustainability threshold standpoint, I know, uh, we may think that recycling's great, there's a lot of people that don't, you know, agree on a mandatory fee structure, so I would say, just from the discussion over the, of the last few years in Starkville, but I think, I mean, if you would say you want help, I don't mind helping, I think the best way to do is to, you know, obviously find the, the cities that it works in, and how that fee structure works there, if it's an opt-in, or if it's a mandatory, but I hear a lot from both sides, and some of those, there are a lot of people that don't want a mandatory type fee structure, so like I said, if you want, anytime you mention Clinton or Death State or anything, I don't mind calling down there, I would find out where it works in the Southeast, and how does it work there, because here, you know, the threshold for sustainability is pretty just to reach at times, if on an opt-in program, so that's my opinion. They're, you know, they're waste management, custom, and it may be the fact that waste management may say, you know, to get the garbage business, and that may be something that's kind of the caveat, is okay, if you get a garbage business, you get, you know, we don't need to provide your recycling, I mean, maybe something like that, but I just think that we, if we get in here roll up slowly, that we find some way to have a, a curbside recycling program that's not prohibitively expensive, and something that, that we can offer our citizens as an option to, if you live on the south side of town where Jeffrey lives, get him, you know, drive up to the north side of town to a collection site, if you wanna do it, fine, but if you wanna pay six or eight, oh, I don't know what it would be, but pay a, pay a fee to have a truck come by once a month, or once every other week, something like that, and pick it up, us find a way maybe to do something like that.
Sounds like the two of y'all make a great committee, y'all get together and see what you can come up with.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, we have a claim stocket to go, and beyond that, we will be done, so, motion for a claim stocket?
Motion.
A motion from Alderman Sistrum for a claim stocket, second from Alderman Carter, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries five to two, we are now at the point of nothing further on our agenda, so there will not be a work session, because Veterans Day is the 11th, and that is the Friday, so we will not be having a work session, so if you would please, I need a motion to recess. I have a motion from Alderman Bond to recess, do I have a second? a second?
Sorry.
Second from Alderman Brooks, Alderman, Alderman Beatty. Thank you. All right. All those in favor, please signify by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We are in recess. Thank you, everyone.